Screen the applicants and go through the interview process. We view this as a matter of some urgency and we look for every opportunity to expedite the process of bringing a new health agent on board. To help you better understand the board's viewpoint on filling this position, I would like to take a few minutes to review with you the responsibilities of this position and our expectations for it going forward. Public health is a vast area that encompasses a wide range of knowledge and regulations that pertain to preventing disease and promoting health in the population. Local boards of health serve as the local arm of both the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. Massachusetts local boards of health are charged with a complex set of responsibilities, including enforcement of state sanitary, environmental, housing, and health codes in eight specific areas. One, protection of the food supply through inspections of restaurants and other food establishments. Two, observations of soil testing and permitting of septic systems for both new construction and repairs. So far this fiscal year, we have processed four new construction, septic permits, and 39 septic repair permits which are mandatory under Title V in order to sell your house. We also review and maintain records for approximately 80 to 100 Title V inspection reports annually. Also, the health agent reviews and weighs in on septic plans for any proposed new housing development in town, whether or not it is actually built. Three, healthcare and disease control, including timely reporting and response to communicable diseases, occupational health and safety violations, food poisoning and rabies. Four, inspections of pools, beaches, camps, motels, and mobile home parks. Five, enforcement of the state sanitary code and lead poisoning regulations in housing. Six, enforcing tobacco control laws. Seven, developing, testing, and building awareness of emergency preparedness plans for a wide range of hazards. Eight, a wide array of other responsibilities, including issuing burial permits, regulating pesticides, inspecting massage and tattoo parlors, and issuing health reports, as well as following up on a wide array of miscellaneous complaints and determining whether or not they are valid. Keep in mind, these are minimum standards. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts has delegated to local boards of health the authority to make local regs which are more stringent than state regs. Failure to follow public health rules and inspections can lead to bad outcomes. Here are four examples. One, foodborne illness outbreaks, for instance, salmonella or hepatitis A. Currently in New Hampshire, they are experiencing a hepatitis A outbreak. Seventy-nine people have been diagnosed in the past year and a half, with 63% of them hospitalized, and as of yesterday, one death. Two, septic system failure and contamination of groundwater. Three, unhealthy living conditions in rental housing. Four, health risks encountered at camps, swimming areas, tanning facilities, et cetera. And the amazing thing is, the Topsfield Board of Health has exactly one and a half employees who not only have to understand it all, they have to be able to interact with 6,085 citizens one at a time or in groups and explain over and over again why regulations have to be enforced for the good of everyone. So, in addition to knowledge, they need skills of communication, compassion, and flexibility. Current knowledge must continually be maintained and skills must be practiced. By law, the health agent must be responsive 24/7, for instance, nights and weekends. In a nutshell then, the Board of Health Agent provides professional administrative and supervising services to the town of Topsfield relative to enforcing federal, state, and local public health laws, rules, and regulations. The agent holds a department head-level position within Topsfield Town Government and is responsible for developing and implementing plans for preventive and environmental health programs, activities, and clinics. In addition to the above regulatory responsibilities, the Board of Health is always looking for opportunities to provide outreach and health education to the public. In recent years, these opportunities have increased and have come along with increased need for inspectional services for food safety. These events mostly occur outside of routine town hall office hours. Here are five examples. One, there are an increased number of food vendors now numbering 157 at the Topsfield Fair, which runs now for 11 days. It is a challenge to permit and inspect all these in such a short timeframe. Prior to opening day, the health agent holds a class in food safety for vendors. Additionally, the Board of Health sets up a food safety display in the 4-H building. Two, the fairgrounds has steadily added large weekend events, such as a wedding expo, home show, gemmin' mineral show, multiple horse shows, the Castleberry Fair, the Tour de Cure, and a paddle-thon, all of which have food served to the public requiring temporary food permits and inspection. The Strawberry Festival has grown and added food booths in addition to preparing and serving hundreds of strawberry pancakes. The Holiday on the Green has recently added 18 permitted food vendors, including some very popular food trucks. The Board of Health has seized this opportunity to also provide flu shots. Every year, we scramble to find a space to do this. This year, we hope town hall will be open and we will give flu shots here. Most recently, the Grow Spring Expo has started up and quickly expanded to include 20-plus food booths and two food trucks. I recently accompanied our alternate health agent food inspector on her rounds. She spent five hours inspecting, and this does not include countless hours put in previously by the administrative assistant to determine who is coming and prepare the permits. Simultaneously, our administrative assistant set up our mosquito and tick table, and we spent five hours educating the public. So, with regard to the above examples, we are committed to meeting the inspectional demands of these events in addition to providing health education outreach at them. But please note that they require an enormous amount of time out of the office, mostly on weekends. Yes, we have embraced the opportunities for health education outreach, but make no mistake, the legal requirements for food safety inspections are mandatory, and failure to assure safe food for the public would result in foodborne illness outbreaks and liability for the town of Topsfield. And it should be noted that these large events draw hundreds of thousands of people from surrounding towns, not just Topsfield. But more importantly, in 12 years, there has not been one incidence of foodborne illness in Topsfield. It has often been said, "If public health is done right, nothing happens." In other words, when public health is working, it is invisible. In addition to the things we are required to do and the aforementioned outreach and health education activities, we have a number of upcoming initiatives. I will describe six of them. One, we plan to work with town initiatives to digitalize records so that they are available to residents online. Two, we plan increased educational outreach activities, such as those we already do. One is a mosquito and tick talk in the spring, which brings in speakers from NEMC, the Northeast Massachusetts Mosquito Control and Wetlands Management District, of which Topsfield is a member. This is an example of a regional approach to mosquito control. And the second one is a talk about personal emergency preparedness to Topsfield senior citizens. In 2012, we used our federal emergency preparedness funds to create this special booklet for Topsfield, which is a combination of general and local emergency information, as well as a workbook to gather personal information that you will need in an emergency. Please accept a copy of this book and keep it in a go-bag in case you need it in a hurry. We are planning a flu clinic, oh, number three of our six initiatives upcoming. We are planning a flu clinic in conjunction with the Council on Agent Lunch this coming October. One little-known fact is that, through a Medicare and health insurance program, the town is reimbursed for the administration of flu shots that it gives. We currently receive approximately $20 per shot, resulting in an annual amount of approximately $2,900 going into the general fund. We believe we can increase this revenue by, first, enhancing training of volunteers, and, second, increase numbers of vaccines administered, which will result from working together with the Council on Agent. Four, as you know, Topsfield has plans already for a local emergency dispensing site, but you may not know that an important regionalization effort is currently underway in planning for a tri-town emergency dispensing site. This will be set up at a regional high school in the event of the occurrence of emerging infectious disease outbreak that requires rapid dispensing of vaccines or medication, for example, an expanded measles outbreak epidemic, where the population must be vaccinated quickly. In order to fine-tune this plan, we will use our federal emergency preparedness grant funds to hold a tabletop exercise at the Ghoul Barn on the morning of May 6th. Selectmen are hereby invited to attend as observers. If you think such an emergency is unlikely to really happen, or that the state will step in and take over, I want to remind you that during the 2009-2010 H1N1 influenza outbreak, the Topsfield Boxford and Middleton Health Departments cooperated to hold 28 clinics where over 4,300 people were vaccinated. Topsfield is a statewide leader in the effort to create regional EDS sites. Five, we are in the process of setting up guidelines for management of out-of-town activities and, for instance, coalition meetings and trainings. And six, we need to work on enhanced communication pathways between the Board of Health, the Selectmen, and the town manager. I hope I have given an adequate description of the scope and of the responsibilities of the Board of Health Agent and the board's expectations for the new agent. Given the scope and workload of the position as I have just described it, the board has met and has affirmed that the position of health agent needs to be maintained at full-time, 40 hours per week. Work is already piling up. We need for this position to be posted without further delay. And thank you, and I have questions.
Thank you. I know this happened automatically, but could you get that on the website? Maybe something in the news section that gets people to answer it? Thank you so much. Are there any further you want to say?
No, I'm just available if you have any questions or you want to discuss.
Anybody have any further questions for Cheryl?
Cheryl, you mentioned multiple truths. Can you mention what those are?
I think there are multiple ways that you could staff the Board of Health office. I respect Kelly for her creative plan and what she wants to do. I mean, it certainly is possible to have a 32-hour person who's here four days a week, a, what did we say, four hours of a special inspector to do something special, and then four more hours for our administrative assistant to do more work. I don't personally see the advantage of that, and I've got like, you know, 50 years of experience in working in local public health. I've seen many offices in Northeast Massachusetts and have worked in them, and I see how they function. One of the things that is so disconcerting about really everything nowadays is how fragmented everything is. Just think of your healthcare, and you have all these doctors and people that you can go to. You walk into one, and nothing gets transmitted to the next doctor, or to, and then you look at your chart online, and they didn't even write it down correctly. This, to me, having more people involved is just fragmentation. Also, it's, how is it going to save money? Because the consultants we're talking about for four hours are going to cost a lot more money, and then more hours for, so we've got, it's very clever to divide it up and have it all equal to 40 hours. I don't think it's going to save any money. It might end up costing more money. And the other thing is, the person who would coordinate all of these consultants would be our administrative assistant. This is more work for her with probably no more authority. So, that's, and that leads me to, how would, you know, how would it work? Who is in charge down there? Is the agent in charge, is the 32-hour person in charge of the outside consultants? Or is, you know, would Sue become sort of an administrative, not a director, but leader or something where, or, you know, the thing is, is she going to have the responsibility for getting all this done with zero authority? That's a, that's a poor model. I've worked under that. That's a recipe for failure. And also, you know, are all these different people going to report directly to the board? Or do they, will they report to the agent? These are all things that are problematic in many cities and towns, and I don't want to create them here. We have a good, we have a good model. You know, somebody who's, Larry's one of our newest citizens in Topsfield, this is Larry Fixer, he's very interested in local public health. And I forget what it was that I was going to say that you were telling us about. But the point is, who reports to whom? Who reports to us? But, it could work! And that's the other truth. You know, if it has to work, it would have to work, but I don't see any reason in complicating this. Oh, I know what it was. You know, the agent is frequently multitasking. He'll be at a septic inspection, and the phone will ring, and it'll be like, urgent, you know, housing complaint, or vice versa. I may be doing a food inspection, and the installer calls. Or he's down at his, and this happened, all these things have happened, so I don't even need to, you know, make them up. But, he's down doing his office hours, and his phone rings, and it's the installer saying, "Look, you know, I know, I know you were supposed to come by and inspect the bottom of bed of my septic system, and I wasn't there, but it's because my trucks were late, and now they're all there, and they're running their motors, and I really need you to come right, it can come right now, and just do the bottom bed, which is going to take five minutes." You know, he's like, "You know what, I'm just going to run over there and do that. I'll be right back." Comes back, meanwhile, there's six more people in line, because he was supposed to have had office hours, but he's really trying, you know, expedite the inspection. You know, it sounds chaotic, but it's handled. Other times, he's been, he has always been, because he's available 24/7, he's always available by text and phone, day or night. I was reminiscing with Dick, we had a thing, an agent was on vacation in Maine, and I got a phone call from him that somebody had died, and they were blaming it on horses, which had ticks, which horses don't have, and that it was all the horse's fault, and it was the people in that store who owned the horses, and you people have to do something about it. And so, it's on a course, a weekend, everything is, and I'm home with company in the house, you know, and I spent the whole day back and forth, you know. The first thing to do is confirm, is this, did we get a report of this disease? You know, because this is just somebody saying someone died. And we spent days, you know, untangling this, and then when he got back from vacation, he went over to the person's house, talked to them, and he can talk anybody down off a cliff, which is one of the things that you need to be able to do, because people get, these are serious problems that they have, or if they're not that serious, it's serious to them on that very day. And you need a person who understands that and is compassionate and can help people along. Whatever health need that they have, generally, they never had it before. This is new. They need guidance, they need reassurance, and you need somebody to do that. If you, if we fragment this, I feel like it's just going to be people coming and going, punching a clock, it's a job, "I'm out of here, it's four o'clock, cyanide, I'll see you Monday." I don't want that type of person for Topsfield. I want, I want, I want somebody who is going to care.
Apart from the fragmentation, which I understand your points on that, just looking at the pure hours, the 40 hours versus potentially 32, my understanding is that our Board of Health Agent was also the Board of Health Agent for another town?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and that was-
And trying to look at, then, how do you do that? Two jobs and art, you know?
Yeah, it was a very small position. It was stipend, or whatever that means. It means just a little sum of money. And my understanding was that he did it on weekends and evenings. Did it ever overlap? I think it did, and I'll give you one example, was, this was several years ago, he called me, again, after hours or something, and said, "I need to tell you this. There is a person in Nahant," and this is different from our two people in this town, "person in Nahant has been diagnosed with tuberculosis. We just lost our Nahant public health nurse." Though, one of the important things in tuberculosis is directly observed therapy, DOT. Somebody has to go, and this is a whole separate, it's so big, it's a responsibility of all local boards of health to provide a care coordinator for tuberculosis patient, because they need to take that medication for at least 12 months, a whole fistful of antibiotics. They do, they mess up your digestive system, they're not fun. So, people tend to want to stop taking them. When that happens, as you know, with even like regular antibiotics, the germs say, "Ha, those strongest of us have now survived, and we will win. You have now created a multi-drug-resistant germ." And now, that is happening worldwide because there has not been oversight of people taking their medications. So, that has to stop, or we won't have any drugs to combat tuberculosis. So, he said, "I hate to say this, but I have to go to this guy's house in Nahant. I have to be there at 8:00 every morning. So, I'm telling you this because I'm just, I need to watch and take those pills, and then I'm coming to Topsfield. But you need to know that, I mean, I'm just, I have to do this." And I said, "Okay, thank you for letting me know. We will, you know, work around it, he'll work extra hours or whatever." That was the only time, you know, that he ever, in 12 years, you know, that there was an overlap, and I was told about it. So, that's one, I, well, I could go on. I think that probably answers, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does say about conflicts.
It can be.
But is there still, I don't know if it's 20 hours in another town and 40 in ours, was our person working 65 or 70 hours?
Oh, no.
Does it indicate that maybe this isn't a 40-hour job in order to be able to handle two towns?
No, it indicates that John was, John loved to work, and he, I don't think he went home very much, but, you know, he doesn't sit around, so this to him was fun, you know, on weekends to go to Nahant and do that. It's nice there at the beach.
It's beautiful.
So, no, I, my, my impression is Nahant was very minimal hours. There was, nothing happens there.
Cheryl, my impression for years has been the fact that you guys have, the Board of Health has been a real asset to the town of Topsfield.
Thank you.
And I'm proud of that group.
Thank you.
And I'm not about to stick my nose into helping you run your department. It sounds like a huge job, and when we read this and hear that, it's a lot bigger than most of us think, I believe, and that's why I liked Mark's suggestion to get that up on the webpage so that people can read it.
Sure.
Other people will understand how big the job is.
I'm honored. I had it for you.
I hope you can find the right person. My vote would be 40 hours at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, just to do a little follow-up on your thing, the Board of Health, and I think you know this, but I just want to emphasize it, is, has the, I guess I said it, but now I can look at you and say it, is, you know, has been delegated the authority by the legislature for all of this that I talked about. We have the authority, we delegate it to the health agent. In the absence of the health agent, we retain the authority. So, this is why I'm so eager to get this posted, because just in the past, you know, the day that he was first retired, and Sue was out sick for the first time in like a million years, I said, "Okay, I'll be, I'll be over there." And so, I came over, because I knew, when John was thinking of retiring, Sue said to me, "I'm really worried about this Bieber permit. I know it's in his box to sign." So, in my mind, I knew about the Bieber permit, and I said, "That's my goal, I'm going to sign that." Meanwhile, I, so I got it, I found it, that took a little looking, and then I found out that John had been talking with Greg Cram and was worried about the Bieber permit too, because he could no longer sign it, because he was no longer, you know, the agent. And so then, somebody called Kelly, and I said, "I signed it, Kelly," because what happened, the water started rising over it by Stuart School, the town wellfields over there, and apparently, it's pretty, would be not a good thing if that kept flooding. We wouldn't have, we'd lose half our source of town water. So, he wanted to start trapping Friday. I signed it Friday morning. Okay, fine. And then there was some other person that needed a certificate of compliance for the bank, because they wanted to buy the house, and they needed it for Friday. So, I signed it for him, he's happy now. If you want to stick to regulations, we have 45 days to look at a plan and approve a plan. Last night, we talked about that. Jerry Topping, who's an engineer builds these things, said, "If we stuck to that, it would be catastrophic. People would be up in arms every single day, because they could never meet any deadlines of mortgages or anything else." They, you can't wait, you can't wait 45 days. I did also bring a list of things that are pending, and there's pool inspections that come up in May, and there's camp inspections. We have camps and we have pools in town. Those are, those are the extra things, you know, for this timeframe. I just went downstairs and talked to Sue, because she gets, you know, pretty nervous about worrying about these things. And I said, "Sue, I have a plan." She said, "Oh, good." I said, "My, so, we have a meeting scheduled already for a week from tomorrow, and we will bring, it will be a working meeting, we will bring these things, and we won't talk about anything else, we will go through them, and the guys will look at them and try to approve them and try to sign them, and that'll get us through this week. And then, you know, we'll just go, oh, week, five weeks." So, I mean, you know, so that's how, there he is now. Jerry, we're just concluding, and I see that you made it. This is Jerry Topping, Board of Health.
Hi, Jerry.
Hi, guys.
Hi, Jerry.
Co-chairman.
And I just, Jerry, here's my newest version.
One other question or comment, I don't know what it is. You had an agent that worked 32 hours a week.
Say that again?
You had an agent that was a 32-hour week guy.
You did? What was that?
Was Kulan full-time?
No, he was 40.
Oh, he was 40? Okay.
Yeah.
So, in fact, if we go, and it sounds to me like you couldn't get all of his work done at 40 hours.
Well, you know, it's-
So, if we go back to 32-
I know, this is-
We might be going backwards.
Well, we certainly wouldn't-
Respectfully, Kelly, I'm not-
Yeah, no. We wouldn't go forward. I don't think we'd go forward, you know? It would be, it would be challenging, and I worry about the fragmentation of it. And then, Jerry, you were going to say something about the versus, we very had a lovely discussion, and I read this, and then we were talking, but weren't you, didn't you say you had some-
Yeah, so, Jerry Topping, Vice Chair, Board of Health. So, last night, we were discussing it, and Kelly brought up the idea of, you know, 32 and then using outside consultants to share the burden, you know, getting a subject matter expert, you know, the right person at the right time to do the right job in and out. And then I got home last night, reread our job description that we had worked on in March. And the person that we're trying to find is a college-educated, registered sanitarium. That's the person that we're looking for. That's the person that we're looking for to fill this position. And I really do not believe, you know, I did a little web search, because there's other towns that are looking right now too, that that type of person would, you know, a non-full-time job would appeal to that type of person. So we're looking for somebody with a bachelor's of science and then with a bunch of accreditations, you know, to lead the department. You know, I don't think a part-time position would appeal to the type of candidates we're hoping to attract in the town. You know, and, you know, the argument of less hours than using outside consultants, you know, the prior agent, John, you know, had a wealth of experience and resources to address what happened in the town, you know? So it's a smaller town, but the workload is diverse, and having that expertise wrapped up in one person that's beholden to the town, I think, add value. And the route of going to consultants, whether you call them alternate agents, consultants, whatever they may be, you know, I don't think that's a value add. I think that's actually going to cost more money, you know, from a consultant who likes to be a consultant, you know? Kick me out or pay me more long years. So that was kind of my two cents, having, you know, slept on it and thought about, you know, trying to attract the person. You know, we only get one shot to do that first listing, to build, you know, a little hype in the small world that is the Board of Health, which, you know, unfortunately, they all talk. You know, and I'd like to go in there with the job description as listed and keep the position as it has been, you know, for the last 12, 14 years, I'm not sure of exactly. So that, you know, that's my two cents about type of candidate we're looking for, and finding full-time employment, I think, is important.
Thank you also. Anybody else want to? I don't believe there's any action required from the board at this time. Thanks for all that information, and definitely someone get on the website, that would be wonderful.
Thank you, Cheryl. That was very thorough.
Yeah.
Very informative.
Thank you. I enjoyed sharing it. It's my favorite thing to talk about.
Next time you come, don't wait out in the hallway, though, just come right back.
You guys discussed next steps, right?
Sorry, sorry. Next steps?
Post the position.
Post the position?
Right, okay.
Okay.
Thank you for coming, Cheryl.
Good luck with your recruitment.
Yeah.
Well, crossing traffic, I thought everyone would be on vacation, not so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Minutes, you'll have to stay for the minutes.
I won't take that personally.
Donald Clerk.
Let me just get this bed up and running here. Okay, so we had March 21st working session.
Entertaining one.
Yes.
Move to approve minutes of NOS work session held on March 21st, 2019.
Do we have a second? Any suggested revisions?
Dick had one, but it is incorporated in here.
Agreed. Anything further? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Ayes. Is that it for today?
We have one in executive session.
Okay. Entertain a motion that will take by roll-call vote to enter into executive session according to the Mass General laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, under exception two, to conduct a strategic session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically to discuss and negotiate the town administrator's employment agreement, since an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the government's priority position. And once again, we do not intend to return to regular open session. Hold on one second. Do we have a, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
We have a second.
This discussion about going to, no. I don't think we need your attendance. Will you be here for a little while?
Yeah, yeah.
And could you turn off the camera?
I vote yes.
Oh, God, thank you. Alls in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you.
We're going to go grab the executive session.